Mark's here now.
Okay.
Good evening, guys.
Hello, good evening.
Julie Coles.
We have a forum at six o'clock.
Do you want to do a call to order?
Yes, why don't we go ahead? Yeah, if everyone has all their paperwork together. Call the order.
Can I have a roll call?
Mark Carlton.
Dan Murphy.
Steve Nelson.
Katie Missfeld.
Okay.
We're going to move on to one point two pledge of allegiance.
Okay. I'm gonna lead us, Katie?
Yes. I pledge allegiance. Thank you, everyone. So we're going to 1.3 Agenda Review and Approval. I know our chair, Steve Nelson, wanted to add 5.5, Dr. Wong?
That's correct.
New business for board leadership action items, Steve Nelson. And if I could have a motion to approve.
Sorry, can I propose adding another item? We don't have to, but it'd be concerning OSBA and the value that they may or may not bring. Or should we put that in another?
You know what? I think what that is probably that's an item, future item. If we get down there, raise it and then we can talk about that. Okay?
That's fair.
Where are we thinking about putting that, Dr. Wong?
7.0 comments, future agenda items. So it's just.
Got it. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the two additions?
I'll make that motion.
A second? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 2.0, 2.1 Correction Approval of Regular Meeting Minutes from January 10, 2022. Do we have any corrections to the agenda? Or I mean, I'm sorry. We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 10, 2022.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Dan. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. On favor?
Aye. Aye.
3.0 Communication Report, 3.1 Natural Resource Center, Mr. Mathis. I think I saw him come in.
Mr. Mathis, Mr. Mathis, are you there? We have your name on the screen.
He's here, but he's still muted.
I'm here, but I have some camera issues and we have some connectivity issues because of the weather also. So if I drop out, I drop out, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you for joining us.
Okay, so there's some, I'm trying to get a camera connected here. You're welcome. Let's see if that works.
Yeah.
All right. That's as good as it gets. Hi.
Hi, Mr. Mathis.
Hi, Mrs. Missfeld.
I think, Mr. Mathis, we're ready to hear whatever you have to share with us briefly about the Natural Resource Center tonight.
Oh, okay. Yeah, and I planned for it to be brief. We had intended for you to get an in-depth report tonight. There are, the load right now is pretty significant, so we didn't get around to preparing a meeting. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to share with you that Ben DeCarlo and I have accomplished much in the last year and a half since the school returned to in-person learning. Ben DeCarlo has been guilty of getting all the elementary school students and middle school students out to the NRC on a regular basis since last spring. And he has done a great job of connecting his curriculum with a hands-on, place-based, outdoor learning model. And when we return to you this time next week, Ben is going to be a part of a presentation that he'll explain to you how that's working well. I wanted to also say that there are a lot of development projects that are shovel-ready at this point. We're hoping to see a lot take place starting in March, running through the entire calendar year, which will hopefully find us with most of the development of the NRC done within 365 days of when we commence this March. That means bridges, classrooms, laboratory space, and yet another classroom being brought online. And then quickly, I wanted to share with you one of the community service projects that we began last early summer, late spring at the NRC. We were offered 16,000 tree seedlings by the Bureau of Land Management and Oregon State University. And our students spent two weeks taking these tree seedlings that were going to be thrown into the compost pile. And with donated soil and pots, they were able to save 2,000 tree seedlings with the intention of turning them over to open-chain fire landowners, fire victims, landowners who'd lost their trees. And today, the first landowner came out and actually picked up 50 trees. So that project has now come full circle. The trees were saved. We kept them covered all summer by canopies, kept them out of the severe heat that we suffered through most of the summer. We kept them hydrated every day. These trees were just going to be, you know, like I said, thrown in the compost pile. Now they're going to be replanted on mountainsides and properties of people who suffered from the fire. So we will probably give away about 800 to 1,000 trees this week. And then the balance of those will be used by the school for planting out the NRC and selling for fundraisers, because these trees in three years will be worth $50 apiece inside of a five-gallon bucket. And we hope to have about 400 or 500 of them to sell in three years. So but that's the type of thing that we're doing at the NRC. Students fully engaged in hands-on outdoor work. We have SOU students with us again this year. This is the fourth year that we have had Southern Oregon University students engaged in their environmental studies program as well as business management programs. When I speak with you next month, I'll give you an update on what projects are being, what projects we're going to see on the landscape out there this year. One thing I will share with you is they're making a, one of the students who is a professional documentary filmmaker has started started filming for a documentary that's going to be entered in the Documentary Film Festival down in Ashland. So a lot of big things happening. And I wanted to say that I'm happy to be representing the Natural Resource Center to a board that has been so cooperative and has made all the right choices when it comes to supporting our school and being safe in this COVID epidemic. We really feel supported by our board as teachers and unlike other locations where people are complaining and just making a mess overall, we're not doing that here. And I'm happy to see, happy to see the level of cooperation that we're experiencing here. So I just wanted to say thank you. And Happy Valentine's Day. You know, see you all next week or next month.
Thanks.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Mathis. You're doing an amazing job, by the way. And I think we're really appreciative to have you. Does anyone have any questions for him? While he's here? No?
Okay, well, good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mathis.
Thanks.
No, not right now. I'm sorry, guys. Okay, 3.2 Superintendent Report Updates, Dr. Wong.
Well, I'm very happy this month, on the night of the board meeting, to tell you that I think the last month, I, we were shutting down school for two weeks and at least, actually one, but it ended up being two. But we seem to have come through that really well. Our teachers were quite adept at flipping to distance learning and helping our kids get through the eight days that we were off-campus. And when we came back, we had our testing in place and we really haven't had any significant, serious COVID-related outbreak since then. And I just especially want to express appreciation to parents who were vigilant. If their kids were showing symptoms or if they needed to finish the isolation or quarantining period, but they kept their kids home and so it didn't come to school. And, you know, there's lots of, there's lots of things going on out there right now, but that was one that I think that was the minimum impact, got everyone through their period of quarantining. And then we were able to start up school and thankfully, the weather has been beautiful. And I wouldn't say today is beautiful, even though it's raining because we need the rain. But it's just kind of been like getting kids outside and playing and probably about half of them aren't wearing their masks and half are because we said it was optional outside. And it's been a good month since I last talked to you about that part of our school. We did see a slight drop in our enrollment between the, right before winter break and the end of January, we're down by the students. And there are a couple of good reasons for that that are specific to the students. But we also have been picking up a couple of students this month in February already. So I think our enrollment next month is going to be right around 190, plus or minus a one or two. And, you know, our desire is to not lose enrollment, but to be be having a full program as full of programs we can have so we can demonstrate to families out there that we're viable and that we will be welcoming students next year, hopefully to increase our enrollment and our activity level. I also wanted to speak to a safety incident we had about two weeks ago, week and a half ago. Public information is that we had a student bring a sharp razor knife, utility knife, to school and was distressed and made a verbal threat against another student. We were able to intercept the knife and get the student under control and work with the parents. And at the time, as I was assessing, I put the student on an immediate eight-day suspension. I am extending that to suspension pending expulsion because of the seriousness of the threat and that there's a weapon involved. School war policy actually requires us to go in that direction. The concern we have for this clearly is for all the students and then for students who, there's a lot of rumors that spring up around this. But what I would tell you is that the student in question will not be on our campus again through the rest of this school year and into much of next, because it's a one-year expulsion. But we do have a responsibility to serve that student and their family. And so we've been putting together a plan of how we can make sure the student can continue academically, but also getting the other help that the student should get in a circumstance like that. This is not, is not a healthy action for sure. And so I wanted to let you all know that it may not be something that comes to the board and in the process simply because we'll work with the parents to come up with the plan and implement the expulsion. There is always an opportunity to appeal that, but this is a pretty clear-cut one. So instance, so I wanted to update you and the community on that because it's serious. Our first obligation is to keep our kids and our staff safe. And in this instance, we were able to do that. So I'm grateful for that. Beyond that, there's been, you know, today was Valentine's Day and we have one class where the students, a student and then the basketball team, girls' basketball team are going to be gone in the afternoon. So they're going to celebrate Valentine's Day tomorrow, so they all can be there. But really, that's more of a time of just community and appreciating each other. And it has been good in this kind of grim time that we've been working through with COVID and all that, to have kids doing fun stuff together, playing outside at recesses and then also being considerate of each other when someone can't be a part of an activity like that. There are certainly a lot of other things going on. I filled out the application for a couple of grants to renew our the investment in our facilities, specifically around long-term facilities planning and some help with asbestos recertification of our asbestos evaluation, really exciting stuff like that, important stuff. The stuff that goes on behind the scenes and just appreciative of our staff working together to to keep the program moving forward and kids learning and growing. So I think I will stop there. We have other items on the agenda that we'll be talking about and I'm looking forward to those conversations.
Thank you, Dr. Wong. Does anyone have any questions?
No. No.
Um, we're going to move on to 3.3, U. Falls Charter School Report Updates, Dr. Wong.
The thing that I wanted to add in this section is that we've had actually a rather robust elementary, middle school sports program going on this year. Our numbers have been down at the high school and our high schoolers have been focused on other things. So we've struggled to field teams. I think right now there's an attempt to see if we can get a baseball team going. And I'm not sure we're going to make it numbers-wise. And softball, we had a fewer students interested, but we did get permission for girls to play on the baseball team if that would help us get a team. We're just going to make that assessment later this week, whether that's even doable. We are planning on middle school practice spring and we'll see if there's a way to involve some high school kids in that and helping alongside that. But it's, you know, it's, it's, it was pretty exciting this last week to be at the girls' middle school basketball game. And they have 21 girls out for middle school basketball. And so there were five on the floor. There were, I gotta do my math here now, 14 chairs and two girls sitting on the floor and they all got to get in the game. We have varsity and a JV team. And all those fans, those parents and families who wanted to cheer for high school sports and haven't been able to this year turned out for the middle school game. And I think our opponent was not prepared for that robust of a welcoming. But they have advanced so far in skills and it's just really great to see our middle school kids come together through sports in the kind of a community which we're excited about what that means for the next few years as they grow up here. So other than that, I'm going to, that's what I have as far as a report on the charter school. And we can go on to the next item.
Thank you, Dr. Wong. I was at that game. It was a lot of fun. Um, we're going to move on to 3.4 Review of Payment Abilis. Does anyone have any questions about the bills?
Page one at the top of page two, the Johnson Controls Security Solution. Cameras or lights or what?
That is the security system at the high school. I believe that is a annual, that's an annual service that we pay for.
Then on page four, some metal staples advantage. Some little supplies, 969.
And those are a very large order of masks.
Mask, face mask.
Face masks.
Charge to the SIR account, correct?
Correct.
That's the federal money.
That confirms my question.
Thank you, Dan. Does anyone else have any questions around that, the bills? Okay, we'll move on to 3.5, the Financial Summary Mistaken.
It's been a pretty quiet month, which is a good thing. We are currently waiting for the 22-23 state school fund estimate, which we're anticipating to get it no later than March 1st. Once we have that, that will help us really see where we're at for budgeting for the next biennium. Last week, I got an email from ODE. Actually, we were on a webinar last Friday with Adam Kryne, who does the state school fund estimate. And he indicated that statewide student enrollment is down 30,000 students statewide. So that's a huge impact to the state school fund statewide. What that means for us is because we have also declined in enrollment, the way that the formula works for doing state school fund, that can be at our advantage because we've also dropped. So that can be an advantage where we won't necessarily, I won't say we won't, but it's possible that we won't see as large of a decrease because of the enrollment. So because the whole state's gone down, the adjustment's going to also be done where it could impact us less than what we had anticipated. So that's a good thing. They do know that also going into the 22-23 year, Adam said that the enrollment that was included on the estimates statewide was down quite a bit. He wasn't anticipating it to be that low. So what that means is that there could be a potential another shift in the 22-23 state school or the, yeah, 22-23 state school fund once everybody's enrollment hashes out. It's kind of one of those gambling things right now. People are anticipating it enrollment being low. So that's an advantage to us. So I was pretty thankful to hear that only because that puts us back into not thinking that we're going to take a big hit as we might have anticipated. I'm expecting at the end of February, the first part of March, also to see the remainder of the 21-22 state school fund. And also the true up will happen in April for the 2021 state school fund. If you remember, it's on a three-year rolling. So we're going to true up 2021 in April. We'll have a new state school fund estimate for 21-22, and then we'll see the new one for 22-23. Both of the last two, we'll see at the end of February 1st of March.
Hey, Rachel, where?
Yep.
Do those students leave the state or?
Homeschool, leave the state. I mean, it's, I think it's a combination of a lot of things. We don't know where they go.
Out of the public school system?
Yeah, they go out of the public school system and they're not recorded in enrollment. And so statewide, it's impacted a lot of people. I know that in the Portland area, I believe I heard 3,000 kindergarteners are no longer attending. That's a lot.
And Rachel, did I hear you correctly, 30,000 students?
Correct, across the state.
30,000 students.
30,000 across the state.
Statewide.
Statewide, in Oregon.
That's huge.
Yeah, it's significant. And that's how come they made a point to make sure that when we were in our meeting with ODE on Friday with the business officials that they indicated that because that is, it's an impact for everyone. Anybody else have any questions? I know it's pretty, it's been a pretty quiet month. Just trying to get through the month. I've started the budgeting process. I'm working through payroll right now. I've had a couple of conversations with Dr. Wong, so we're kind of working those out. So we're on target to meet, I believe, the first part of May, I believe, for the Budget Committee. As a reminder, if you know anybody, feel free to recruit a Budget Committee member. It's usually a one-for-one, so for every board member, we would like to have one Budget Committee member. I believe every year, John Huey seems to bless his heart. He hangs out with us for one night every year. But ideally, it would be nice to have one for one. So if you know anybody.
Rachel, here's the reality. John has retired and moved.
Oh, no.
But I'm pleased to report, and I want to get it on the record right now, so you all can make sure she follows her. Stephanie Pitts approached me and said she'd be willing to serve on our Budget Committee.
Okay.
And if there are other people in the community who are interested, we have a brief application process for that that comes to the board, but we would, we would welcome your name.
And we could, if they would just contact Julie or on contact Julie or the feedback email and we could get them the information that's required.
Right.
Rachel?
Yeah, Aaron.
So I want to go back to this 30,000 students. Isn't it a rough number of $5,000 to $7,000 per student? Is that a rough number?
Correct. You're closer to this, you're closer to seven or eight.
Okay, so let's say that it's eight. That's, what is that, $2.4 million? Or is that 24, that's $24 million?
Yeah.
What happens to all that money? If this is a business and our our budget is based on money brought in for ADM and statewide, the population of our business drops 30,000, so $24 million. Does that money just go on hold and is usable or is it disappear?
No, the governors already give their biennium budget. So they've already said that the school districts will receive the $9.3 million for the biennium, and that's for the 20 to 23 biennium. So that's where that re, the recalibration comes into play. So they take everybody's enrollment and they recalibrate across the state where everybody is based on their December count for students. I believe it's the second quarter ADM. And then that's where they recalibrate. So that's where I was saying that because of that recalibration. Um, I believe it's the second quarter A D M. Um, and then that's where they recalibrate. So that's where I was saying that because of that recalibration. We may not see the effects of losing all of the students that we have. Um, that impact may not be as deep because it's being recalibrated across the state and we're one of ninety that have lost students.
So actually, it's like, to just simplify, there's a large pie of nine point two billion dollars. And it gets split between two years, forty-nine percent the first year, fifty, uh, one percent the second year. So the piece of the, the half of pie that's our slightly less a half of pie that's out there right now. The remaining students, it gets divided among them. So everyone's piece is a little bit bigger. That's probably what happens. So they will reallocate by each student slightly bigger.
Yeah, potentially, yeah. I don't want to say yes for sure until I see it from O D E, but yes, but that's, that's. When they're talking about that, that's the potential impact is that your piece of the pie will, will become bigger or. We won't see that negative impact as we were anticipating.
A lesson. And then I think the other piece, because revenue for the state is so high that the kicker is going to kick and it's going to be really big. Um, I do not anticipate that the state would be reducing state school funding.
No.
Because to do that would just be to increase the kicker. It'd be under budget, big budget.
Yeah, not from what I've understood through COSA. So COSA, um, we get, um. Information from COSA on the, on the state's budget and, and where they're landing. And from my understanding. Revenue is up across the state, which ironically, considering, um, the environment that we're in. Um, state packs, state taxes are being paid, um, local taxes are being paid, property taxes, um, the cat tax. Um, which is also another part of our, our funding formula. Um, so ironically, that. Funding is, is holding strong, if not doing better than had anticipated, anticipated.
So does that mean the twenty-four million doesn't follow the kids? It stays within the state?
It should, yes, yes.
State money.
Yeah.
Taxpayers money.
Yep, they just reallocate it. So they, they go back through and they say, okay, now we have X amount of students. And then, of course, they have their formula that they have. Um, and so they go back and do the re, recalibration of the, of the state school fund with what's remaining.
Okay. So one of the things that we did do in our planning is our district received for over the three-year period about five hundred and twelve. Thousand dollars in S R funds. And this year, to not have to cut staffing, particular teachers and end up bundling up kids multiple in, you know, grades in one class. We paid for two teachers and two classified employees out of that money, which means that, that if we end up getting more money. The next two years, we may not have to use that S R money that way. We can invest it in other ways. But what it did is it bought us the cushion until we could see what was going to happen economically. And it looks like that was going to play out well for stability for our district.
Yes.
We still want to grow our enrollment.
Yes, yes. That's the goal.
Uh, Rachel?
Yes, Steve?
You talked about thirty thousand kids dropping out of the system. Aaron mentioned a figure, but if you figure seven thousand dollars a kid, that's over two hundred million dollars. It's about two hundred and ten.
Mm-hmm.
That might go back into the system. Now, how that will affect us, uh, we don't have any idea.
Yeah, it's hard to say because we don't know what everybody else has been hit with. Obviously, thirty thousand students across the state, but that could be five for one district. And a hundred for another district and a thousand for another district. So. I, ideally, I, I can't tell you what that looks like because I don't, and I don't know what their. All encompassing formula is to be able to gauge it. Um, other than I know that it won't impact us as much as I had anticipated for us losing the amount of students that we have.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Summary. Oh, sorry, Rachel, go ahead.
That's okay. I was just going to say that's all I have unless somebody else has anybody, unless anybody else has any questions.
On our financial overview, um, under equipment, object, five hundred series. Um, I'm, I'm sure there's a reason. I was just curious, uh, the dollar difference in our budget and what we spent.
That was because that was for, you're talking about in the expenditures?
And their expenditure for equipment under five hundred series.
That was because we had the truck that was purchased for the maintenance, um, did not arrive when it was supposed to. So it was paid for in August. Um, so, and remember, budgets are done way back in March, April, May of the previous year. So because we didn't realize it was going to take so long, the truck, the budgeting portion of that was not captured in that, um, fiscal year.
That's just the truck?
Yep.
And then if, if you were over in that area, just do a resolution or something to fix that, right?
Yep, yep. You'll start, um, I'll start really keeping an eye on that. Right now, we're totally fine. I watch it every month, but. Um, we, um, don't appropriate by those codes. We appropriate by the function code. So the two thousands, which are where the maintenance is. So that's how we appropriate. So if that's where the adjustment needs to be made. I will bring that to the board in May or June.
Perfect. Thank you for answering that question.
Uh-huh.
Any other questions, guys?
No.
I have one. I have a question, um, while we're on bu, while we're on budget and everything, money. Whatever happened to the purchase of the property next to the gym? Did that go anywhere, Dr. Long, or is that a dead issue?
You know, we just set that off to the side for right now, particularly when we saw what our enrollment was doing. And not knowing where our resources are. And, um, you know, uh, what I would say is that. There hasn't been a lot of development on that property to get it ready for market. So I would just leave that one off to the side for now. It may not be the priority for us that it would have been six months ago.
Understood.
Thank you, Aaron. Um, are we ready to move on? Or does anybody else have a question for mistaken?
I would just say I was going to be there tonight, but. Got quarantine issues in the house. I'll be there next month in person.
Well, later this month in person, right, Aaron?
What's that?
That the twenty-eighth, later this month in person.
Yeah, we're, uh, getting through another quarantine situation.
Yeah, you know what? I get it. Trust me. Um, okay, so we're going to move on to three point six, the E S S A. Uh, that canceled parent involvement, Ms. Freeman.
Happy Valentine's Day. Hey, so let's see, we had our, um. Title carryovers all approved, so we could spend those like we said we wanted to. We, um, Rachel and I, um, did our exit. For our title monitoring on last Thursday and. I think we did well.
Oh, you guys did amazing. I, I came in and met the team and they, they just gushed. And I have to tell you, they were very complimentary of our staff overall on how our staff has helped. Families in the last year and a half through the fire and the pandemic and all of that. And, and it's not because people aren't tired from doing this. But, um, I think they were surprised in some ways that how, um, we work together and how we leveraged all of our various funding streams alongside these federal monies. To help kids and families. So, um, you're not going to say it Julie, but I'm going to say it and they'll say it in their report. Um, Julie has done a very excellent job of shepherding all the paperwork that goes along with federal stuff. Just say federal when you know there's paperwork. And yet they were very complimentary of what it actually meant for people. So congratulations to the team for the hard work.
We have a great team here. And then my final thing is that, uh, Ms., uh, Katie and I on the twenty-eighth are going to do a, um. A virtual, uh, site council, parent involvement. And basically, we're just going to show our, our federal fundings. So that everybody knows what we're spending our funding on and talk about some of the monies that are available to. Um, as we move forward, we can do some parent involvement activities. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Any questions? Okay, three point seven, Beat Falls Community School Partnership, Mr. Murphy.
The landing is functioning. The preschool is operational. And we have had a number of the virus clinics held over there. And that's basically what's going on.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Uh, three point eight, public comment. Oh, wait, was there a question? Sorry. Three point eight public comment.
I received one, uh, email as a public comment. I would like to actually hold it until we discuss four point two because it relates to that. And I think it would go alongside that really well. So if you'll indulge me on that.
I, I have the letter. I haven't read it yet. So I'm fine with that. Everybody else fine with it?
Yeah.
Okay, so four point one, local control letter, Dr. Long.
I just wanted to have on the record the letter that the board, um, had me draft on behalf of you all based on your decision in January. And it made it to the governor's office and to the, uh, various people C seat at the bottom. And within about three days, we had a, uh, an amazing change of direction by the state. So I'm confident it was because of your letter. I, I think there's been a lot of pressure up there, but I did, I did want to honor the work that you did and make sure that it was in the public record. As a statement from this board, really wanting for, um, when we can get, get back to a point where we can have local decisions made locally. In collaboration with our local, uh, public health officials. So for the record.
Thanks, thanks for your help with that.
Thank you, Dr. Long. Does anyone have questions or comments about the local control letter? Okay, so we will move on to four point two, community listening session, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, Dr. Long.
Um, yes, I have, for the board members are here, but it's basically a, a mock-up of, of flyer that we'll put out later this week. And it is announcing the Beat Falls School Board Listening Session. It says at the top, share your thoughts. We're listening. And we are scheduling this for Monday, February twenty-eighth. That's in two weeks from tonight at six P M. And people can attend two ways. They can either come in person to the Beat Falls Elementary Gym. Or they can zoom in via Zoom. And for people who are interested in zooming in. There's an email, the feedback email address here is where you'd say, I'd like to zoom in and then we can send them a link that evening to join. Um, so it's a hybrid listening session where I think the board really wanted to give people an opportunity to share what's on their concern. We've not been able to hold. Public meetings in public, and this is a way to, uh, in the sense of people actually being present in person. And this is a way for people to attend however they're most comfortable. We will have it available in case any board member is unable to join us in person that they can zoom in. And we'll have that, uh, facility in place for them. And I just wanted you to look it over and see if there's any, uh, other suggestions you might have. I think it's pretty straightforward. So thoughts?
This is at the elementary gym?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Well, and I don't have the flyer, but, um, if people know they want to comment, they should definitely let us know ahead of time. So we have an idea of how many people we have that want to speak. Would be my advice.
And, and I guess what I'm sensing is it probably would be something where people could have three minutes to share something if. You know, sometimes people like to bring documentation or things like that rather than, then it's a listening session, not a reading session. Though I, I do recommend people write out their comments because it kind of helps you come, your time goes really fast in three minutes. Um, but, but it's really, I, I think it's our attempt to open it up. The board just would like to hear what people are concerned about or. Proud of or whatever it is about our district of kind of opening the faucet again on, on public comment in a way where, where people can, can see a face-to-face or pixel to pixel, if it were.
I completely agree. And if there is documentation they want to share, um, I was just sharing it. Maybe by the prior Thursday. So we have a chance to review that before the meeting.
Yeah, and I, and I would say the, the format's going to be where you, you're listening. And the board, you know, can decide to how much degree you want to engage, but really. Um, in, unless it's a clarifying question, it, it, I think people might some, sometimes are wanting like, I want an answer right now. I just told you, what's the answer? The board's not meeting as a board to make decisions that night. The board is there to listen and take input. And I'll give you an example of something that people might want to give us input on. You know, we're going to talk about this, uh, some changes in the COVID requirements. And one of the specific ones is around masks. Are they required all the time? Are they gone all the time? Are they optional? And that, that it's very timely to have this in two weeks around that, around what people's thoughts are. Um, I would share with you, um, we, we've allowed our kids to take their masks off outside at, at, uh. Um, whenever they're outside recess and such, and we're finding that some kids are doing that, some aren't. And that seems to be where we really would like to be, where people are comfortable doing what kids are comfortable doing with the. But I do think the other part of that is, is the state still is struggling with the mask inside piece. And we just need to hear from parents particularly. Um, but community members who are involved in our schools and interested in what's going on. So that would be a type of thing. Another type of thing might be, um, you know, we've had a construction project going on at our elementary campus and it's been delayed a little bit. But what are other types of things that people would like to see be a part of our school as we develop, you know, our, our school program? Um, and, or just questions they have about us. Cause, uh, this is an opportunity that to hear maybe those things that people had ideas and they just have been sitting on them for a while. So. Um, I, that, I think that's what we want to encourage, three minutes per person. If one person shows up, we'll give them six minutes. Okay, but I, I think we'll have more than one person. I think there are people who want to come talk to us. And I know you as a board want to listen and I'll be there too. Um, between, uh, this is Toddville and myself, we'll make sure the technology's working and, and we will follow the, the, the current guidelines in place at that time. Which would be face masks inside, physical distancing. But if a person came with their family, you don't have to stay six feet away from your family, of course. And so we'll have flexible seating in that environment for people to be able to observe. And then we will prob, we will also live stream this. So it won't just be Zoom. So if a person wanted to view, but not necessarily comment, that, and maybe write us a feedback email afterwards, that would also be welcome. Some people are hesitant to speak in public, but they want to think a little more. And I just think it's a great opportunity to get some feedback from our community. So.
Any comments?
Having said that, I probably ought to share this email now because it relates. This was an example of feedback. Uh, Dr. Long and School Board, thank you so much for all the time and effort you, you all put in to keep our schools running and keeping our kids learning in a safe environment. Thank you also for lessening some protocols that have been in place, such as masks on the playground, small numbers of spectators at games and fever checks at the front door. Thank you for being willing to change with new information that is coming out regarding what is helpful to keep kids in school. Our community is looking forward to speaking at the upcoming listening session. I appreciate returning to having the ability to meet. And not only have you hear from the community that voted you in. But we get to hear your thoughts in person on what your vision is for the school in upcoming months. I know this is not an easy time to be on the board. These are the things that I would love to see the board start talking about for changes that are coming in the next few months. As you may have heard, our governor will be doing what the majority has asked by giving our local board and superintendent the ability to make the choice of making masks optional. I know that there are many in the community who want this to be optional, and I know a few in the community who want us to continue the mandatory masks. I listened to what the Oregon Health Authority called a public comment session regarding masks. And after hours of doctors, teachers, people with lung issues, children, people with children. Who have mental, emotional issues, I heard about one pro mask comment, yet O H A went forward with a permanent mask mandate until March thirty-first. I feel we're at a point where we get to make decisions for our children's physical health and their mental health. We have had the opportunity to get our children vaccinated, whether in the valley or up here, and teachers and students would be able to continue masks if that's what they desire. As many studies have shown, the variants will continue to lessen in severity. Of course, there are still kids and adults who may have a worst case. That goes the same for every sickness. There are situations where a child or an adult will still need to wear a mask, which should be their choice, but not a blanket for all. The same goes for flu season. You have the ability to get a vaccine or wear a mask if you're involved in a vulnerable health state. I urge you not to take a quick stand on these upcoming options for our students and teachers. I urge you to listen to the community who you make decisions for regarding our schools. Thank you, Evan and Emily Gell. And I just think that kind of frames that piece in terms of how people might want to respond or react to that. But it would allow you all to hear voices in, in the community around that issue and others.
Thank you, Dr. Long. Are we ready to move on to 5.0?
Yes.
So 5.1 Resolution 2206 Classified Employee Appreciation Week, March 7th through 11th, 2022.
You have in front of you a resolution which will honor our classified employees next month during Classified Employees Week. And I'll just very quickly read it through. This is a resolution that would require a motion, a second, and then a vote. Whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world. And whereas classified employees are the backbone of our public education system. And whereas classified employees work directly with students, educators, parents, volunteers, business partners, and community members. And whereas classified employees support the smooth operation of offices, the safety and maintenance of buildings and property, and the safe transportation, healthy nutrition, and direct instruction of students. And whereas our community depends upon and trusts classified employees to serve students. And whereas classified employees with their diverse talents and true dedication nurture students through their school years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Directors proclaims March 7th through 11th, 2022 to be Classified Employee Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join in this observance recognizing the dedication and hard work of these individuals.
Thank you, Dr. Long. Um.
I'll make a motion to pass the resolution.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know I appreciate the classified employees quite a bit. Any other comments? Okay, so we're going to move on to 5.2, the SOESD Local Service Plan for 2022 through 2023. Dr. Long, action.
So I'm not going to read this too. It's, it's about, I don't know, 40, 40 pages long, something like that with the appendix. But what this represents every year at this time of the year, I bring to you the approved Local Service Plan from the SOESD Board of Directors. They don't come up by this, with this by their own. It is actually their, their administration, what's their services. They talk with each school district about what services we need. And then they craft a service plan to serve the 13 school districts that the SOESD serves through resolution, resolution dollars. So this has been already approved, but excuse me, by superintendents with the agreement that we would take it to our boards with the recommendation that you approve this local service plan. This then allows us to access services through the ESD and they can plan staff budget for it and make it happen.
In a nutshell, what is, what do they provide?
Well, probably the biggest thing they provide are specialist services around special ed and psychologists and things like that. But they, for us, particularly as a small district, they are go to on any technology services we need. They repair things for us. They're the ones who came and installed our cameras. They work in conjunction with Hunter Communications around our networking stuff. They help us with the hardware and all of that. And then we also do cooperative purchasing through them. So there are certain school supplies because we buy and bolt through them. We get a much better price than if we bought by ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And they, part of their funding from the state is for every student in their, in their service area, they get equivalent of, I think it's four and a half percent of what the ADM value is. That's their revenue stream for that. But what our ESD does beyond that is, is they've done very strategic in pursuing grants and things that bring more resources to our region that we get that we don't directly pay for. And a good example of that is the positive discipline, training and supports that we're getting in our schools right now and have for the last two years. That's through a regional grant. So didn't cost us anything, but it is making a big difference as far as training. So, so they're, they're just a lot bigger than we are. And that's, that's the benefit.
Are they, are they a private entity or a branch?
They're, they're public. They, they are distinct and separate. They do have their own taxing authority. And it's the zone of all the districts they serve, but they also get that four and a half percent ADM that comes through the state school fund to them. And then grants come to them. And then there are certain things they do that they can actually provide at a lower cost than if we go out on the market. So they do some contracting too.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they're, they're a branch of public education.
They are, they are. If you talk about school superintendents, the superintendent of the ESD is considered in that category. And their employees, most of their, many of their employees, because of their vast special ed services, a large percentage of their teachers are special ed teachers. So they do offer that.
I see the vehicles running around.
Yeah. Yep. Getting us more bang for our buck is what they're doing. So. So I recommend approval of the 2022, 23 local, Southern Oregon ESD Local Service Plan.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
I, I have one more question on this. I noticed I didn't read the entire Local Service Plan, but we were talking about different people serving on their budget meetings. Can board members virtually attend the meeting just to listen in on what they're talking about?
They can. What I would tell you is I've actually sat on their budget committee for the last four years because you all allowed me to do that. So I represent an out at large position for small school districts. And it, that's why I feel more comfortable about supporting their local service plan because I've watched their budgeting process too. But they do have open meetings and I think, I think they live stream them.
Okay, I, so would I just get ahold of them if I'm interested?
Yeah, or send me an email and I'll let you know what it is and I can make sure you get the information you need.
Thank you, Dr. Long. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, so 5.3 adult lunch, adult lunch price increase. Dr. Long, action.
Yes, one of, one of the things that we're able to do through our lunch program is to provide meals to adults too and to staff. But to do that, those meals can't be subsidized by any federal grants. So this is the, the, really the minimum increase that we can do. But it covers the cost so that we're not tapping into money that should be for kids' food. And so what this is, is a request for a motion to increase the adult lunch price, prices, breakfast to 375, lunch to 475, and a pint of milk to 50 cents. It'd be effective today. Actually tomorrow, because we've already passed meals, but.
That's, seems like a bargain. I would.
Yep.
I would make the motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye. Aye.
5.4 Changes in State COVID Requirements, Dr. Long.
Yes. I think you all are experiencing now the overload that occurs whenever there's a shift in state policy and the confusion that goes along with it. And one of the things that I wanted to remind the, the board of, and you who are virtual don't have this in front of you, but we talked about this about a year ago. When, when the state came out with this concept of if you want to have a healthy and safe school, you don't just do one thing, you do multiple things because about everything you do has some gap in it. But the more you have, the more protections you offer for kids. And so they have this graphic and I, to me, it looks like Swiss pieces of Swiss cheese kind of with different sized holes. But they talk about, I think there were nine or 10 different things that are safety measures, sort of a layered health and safety measure approach. And they were, they were symptom screening. That's when you go somewhere and they say, have you had a fever in the last 24 hours? Have you, you know, they're just, you know, democ. Training and education, which is really about people understanding what coronavirus is about and, and why maybe you would or wouldn't do certain things. Cleaning and disinfecting, that's where we invested in additional steps to keep our rooms clean and disinfected. Handwashing, which is something that probably we all needed to be reminded of anyway, because that helps with, with all diseases. It's a sanitation thing. Airflow and circulation in each of our rooms now, we have air purifiers that are running and, and cleaning the air. Testing is another mitigation thing that if you can identify someone who has symptoms, you can, or has a, shows they're positive where you can get them quickly to isolation. And then isolation and quarantine is separating out people who are not well. Cohorting is minimizing the number, the size of groups that kids are in. So that if someone does get sick, you don't have to shut your whole school down, like kind of happened to us about a month ago. And then the physical distancing and we've had different rules on that. You know, they were saying six, when it was first came out, it was six feet. And you can't be around someone within six feet for more than 15 minutes without, you know, unmasked. And then they set up the schools, we can move to three feet if everyone remained masked, which is an interesting thing because when we take the masks off, there's now saying you, then you need to move back to six feet. We'll work through that. Face coverings, that's the mask issue, and then vaccinations. And so the, the, the concept is the more of these you can have, and some are more effective than others, the less likely you have, you're going to have people get sick and have to close your schools. And so the change that's occurring right now is around the face coverings, which is one of the more aggressive protection measures. And as we remove that filter, as it were, that, that they, they're just saying, what are you going to do to, to, to make up for that in some way? That's going to be what school officials are working through this next month. My hope is that, that we'll have a hearing with our, we'll have a listening session with our, with our community. We'll also have more guidance from the state because they've just released their guidance. But as soon as they release guidance, then people start trying to understand it and then more questions come and then they adjust their guidance. And I think that's going to spin for probably the next three or four weeks. And so by March 14th, we, your next board meeting, we should have a pretty clear strategy on how we want to go forward. And you know, if, if the, if the Omicron variant continues to go down, that's a really good thing. My sense is that, that this community and our, and our community here is, is really moving towards masks as being, masks as being optional. And so we have to figure out, because I have to submit a plan by March 31st, what are we going to know different if we do that? That's the part we, I need to bring to you in March and what that would mean. So I appreciate having feedback from the community and from you all on that. And we will look at what the guidance is from our local health officials too. I did ask the question this last Thursday because I meet with health officials every Thursday with other school officials and for Jackson County. And they said they would not be requiring anything more than what the state requires. So that's an important thing for us to understand because they have the authority to do that. But that means if whatever the state sets as the bar, our local public health officials are not going to raise the bar higher than that. Okay, they can't legally lower it, but they, they aren't going to raise it higher. And then the other piece that will be, is out there and I'm not going to read it all to you, but they're already starting to work. And this is a little skinny chart that what happens if you have masks on all the time? If you say, no, we want to have masks on all the time, or if you go to optional masks. And it's just some of the things, programs that were in effect for kids to stay in school are no longer available for us to do because we have to get stricter in some area because we're removing some protections is what their logic is. So please don't ask me to tell you what we're going to do in, on, on, on March 31st tonight because I think we need more information and more input and more discussion, discussions with our employees, with our unions, and, and then the board to be able to weigh all of that. And I'm going to try to bring you a recommendation before your next meeting so you can discuss it. But in the end, we'll be looking to your direction on that.
Dr. Long?
Yes.
All right. So the March 31st and all these timeframes in March, I jot it down a bit ago. In preparation for our public meeting on February 28th, can you put together either some bullet statements for some maybe canned responses that once we listen to the concerns of the community and the parents, you or the board can kind of come out and say, here's where we're headed on that night, February 28th. A little bit of, you know, a little bit of preparation to first hear the community and listen to the people and see what they have to say. But then, because inevitably they're going to want some answers and where we're going. And if, and if the response is generally, well, you know, we got to wait till March 31st or, or whatever, I understand that. But if we have some kind of, you know, current, and I'm not asking to do it tonight or tomorrow. It'd be more like maybe a couple of days ahead of the meeting where we're at two weeks now. Does that, does that make sense what I'm saying?
I think that's a great idea because I, that then also helps us be prepared. Because really it's a feedback loop. You listen, you have information, you make some general statements, you get more feedback. You're really taking the temperature of the community, but also finding out to what degree, you know, what, what knowledge people have about this. In the end, it's interesting in talking with parents, you know, this incident we had with, with the threat, in the end, people want their kids safe. Now, the definition of safe varies, but what it does mean is they don't want their kid to be called out if they're doing something or not doing something that's going to be acceptable. So I would say let's take masks first, for example. I think our kids are going to do fine if we land on an optional mask policy. But what we have to figure out is what are the other things that we are required to do if we have an optional mask policy beyond what we currently do? And I think there are going to be a few things and it's just about us knowing what, you know, what the, what the, the benefits, the cost benefit is and all of that. And, and it doesn't mean that I'm going to advocate that, no, we wear masks all the time at all. It just means that we're going to have to allocate some resources to make sure we're doing these other things so we keep kids safe. And that parents aren't worrying about what's going to happen to our kids. So yeah, I'll draft some things and I'll be glad to talk with your board chair a little bit about that even before we go into that meeting. And, and maybe even share those with you all, you can be prepared to make a statement if you want around them or, or whatever. I think that's a great idea.
Yes, my question would be why, and you may have covered it here, why does it have to go on for another month and a half before we can make it optional? The, the 31st was, apparently it's been decided that it is optional, but, but not for a month and a half.
It, it actually has been relaxed everywhere but in schools before then. But in school, you're under the requirement still from the Department of Ed, 31st, it's a, it's a requirement. The outdoor masking was relaxed, you know, several weeks ago and that we, we've embraced that, but.
Is there any logic for the, just the schools to keep going with this?
What, what I, what I read in the statement that came from the Department of Education is that our general population is more highly vaccinated than our children's, than our children population. And they feel that if, if we remain masked, you know, through March, that the Omicron variants will decrease infections, will decrease enough, it actually reduces the potential of kids getting COVID. That's, that's what I read on documentation. And so they do have, they still have the authority on that one through March 31st through the Department of Ed. But what we're doing outside, we're fine now. And we weren't allowed to do that, you know.
Right. I guess a, a comment I'd like to make to that is, and take it for what it's worth, but the, it's, it's known and proven that COVID doesn't kill kids. But we've made kids shoulder the burden of the fears of adults by forcing them to wear masks. So the school is the only place where kids are forced to wear masks. Everywhere else it seems to be optional, but at school, when they leave school, the masks come off. So everywhere else has moved on, but we're still stuck here. I realize that there's rules and laws, but that's, um, that, that's my two cents on it. So sooner we get through it, the, the better off the kids will be. So.
We have, we have 23 school days left of the mask mandate.
It's better than it was before.
Any other questions and comments? Thank you, Mom.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mom.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so five point five board leadership, um action item, Mr. Nelson.
I believe I've sent a letter to you and Dr. Long. If Dr. Long has that, maybe he can read it to the board.
Sure, sure. Um, says Katie and Dr. Long, I know we have all been hoping for this pandemic to end and for us to resume our regular routines of life, including in-person school board meetings. Unfortunately, even as the state relaxes some of the public health restrictions, my personal health will require me to participate virtually for a while longer. Katie, thank you for stepping up in these past few months to chair our board meetings. As such, I'm asking that the board authorize us to switch leadership positions for the remainder of this school year. This is not unprecedented as we did this within the past two years when Chair Stephanie Pitts proposed a similar switch and I became board chair. And then you requested this item be put on the agenda, and uh here's a recommended motion. Move that Board Chair Steve Nelson and Vice Chair Katie Missfeld switch board leadership positions for the remainder of this school year. He says, thank you for stepping up and helping this way sincerely, Steve Nelson.
Thanks. That pretty well says it.
I'll make the motion as he accept this.
Hold second.
On favor?
Aye.
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 But I guess Katie, that means you are now our board chair.
Thank you guys, I'm I'm studying and we'll try to do a better job. But thank you, Steve.
One of the one of the things I wanted to say here too is Katie has talked to me a little bit about, you know, we we've been so focused on operational things that we have not focused on policy. And we did get an update from the Oregon School Boards Association on policies. And my recommendation would be that that we as a board, as a board, you all, we move ahead on a review of the B section policy around the the roles and responsibility board members to make sure we're plumb and square on that. And then we move on to the others. So I think we would be in a position at your next board meeting to start a discussion around policy specifically on on board, the policies that relate to the board. And um does that does that kind of align, Katie, with what you were thinking?
It does. I mean, and and we may just want to think about a couple of board members meeting with you, reviewing policies, making sure we're okay with it.
Yep.
Showing other board members ahead of time. And and I don't know, I I think there's a lot. Maybe we could do like two to five a meeting. And
Yeah, I think we can move through them, but you you do want to have, make sure that board members have read through them. That there's been a presentation at a board meeting and that you don't actively fill a second reading, just because there may be something that after you have your meeting and people hear about it, or you think about it. Um, but I think we could move through some of those policies very quickly and get back on the the Plumb and Square Board Policy wagon. And and um I I believe at different times, um Steve, but also Mark have expressed an interest in helping with that, and I don't know where your work schedule is or not, but um I I think Katie's expressed an interest, I think it's board chair would be a good invoker, so uh maybe Katie and Steve or Katie and Mark? Okay, like to, would one of you like to volunteer to meet with Katie and me in the next month to do that, or we can do it virtually too?
Yeah, I'm pretty flexible.
Okay, okay, Katie, so why don't we work with Mark this month on the B policies, okay?
Okay, perfect. So we'll basically look at those ahead of time and bring it to the board meeting that make sure everybody sees it ahead of time.
Yeah, and that way you two can speak to any changes that are recommended or any any concerns you might think board members might have.
Okay, perfect. I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you.
What the, I had a question about the union negotiations.
Yeah, we haven't had any additional movement on that right now. I think everyone's kind of waiting to see how funding lands.
Okay.
So um probably we'll do an executive session at the next meeting in March.
Okay.
Regarding labor.
Okay, so six personnel. Do we have anything for that?
We have personnel, we have them all still. So we did, we actually did hire a new temporary uh going to be kind of a help us with everything person, and she's working at her, name is Robin Macy, I got her name right. She's been wonderful and just it's nice to be having some fresh faces and some new energy come along. We're all kind of tired and and she's just been a breath of fresh air. That'll be through the end of this year, and then we'll
My neighbor, that's a good hire. Any other questions about personnel guide? Okay, seven now, uh common features and items from the board. I know Mark wanted to talk about the OSBA.
Yeah, a couple of things. It it, I know OSBA provides uh a lot of value and support. But I think sometimes that they also restrict us in in our flexibility and freedoms. And I don't always know, I don't know that they're always there to support us a hundred percent. So in the past, when I've and I can't even think of any uh examples offhand, but I I know in the past when we've tabled some discussions, the answer is, well, it's OSBA and uh and then if you're not a member of OSBA, then you don't get the the PACE insurance coverage. Understand it right, so I feel like being a part of them at times can limit some of our flexibilities. But it's always been, there's no options, that's the way it is. There this this group of school boards have been pushing for local control um is no, there's probably forty fifty districts in the state out of two hundred that are starting to push to I guess, separate from OSBA and there's enough volume there that there are some insurance companies that are interested in um a volume like that, so the, in the past, it's never been an option. Now it appears that it may be an option to not be a part of OSBA. I don't know that that's somewhere we want to go, but it is potentially a new option for us, so there may be advantages to discuss, and I'm sure there's some disadvantages as well. But um I think there's enough enough movement out there with boards wanting to change the direction. Well, we just heard thirty thousand parents decided they don't want their kids in public education this year. So this could be an opportunity to have more flexibility in the public education system, so.
So what you're asking is, is could that be considered as an agenda, maybe an agenda item on the next board meeting, agenda? And the the questions that I would have is, is for me to speak to that, I probably would reach out to OSBA and say, and so how do you, so what's your spiel? Have we, what, give us a sense, give us a, give us your best shot at why there's value added to being associated with you or not?
Right, right.
So we'd have something to look at. Because because the the challenge is, is that uh whatever support you have, you don't always realize the value of it until you need it.
Right.
And you don't always know when you need it. But if there's a better option, then OSBA needs to be able to explain why it isn't.
Sure, it's sure. It's it it, I wouldn't have put much weight into it, except there's, like I said, a high percent of the districts within the state are actively pursuing. And I haven't done much research on it, but but there's forty fifty other districts that have, so.
Mark, can I ask where you got the information from the, about the other districts?
You mean, how many other districts?
Yeah, like where are you getting that? And the reason why I'm asking is for, because um I've been asked about being self-insured before. And there's only like three districts in the state that are self-insured, and they're very large districts. So I'm just curious as to where the information you as to those in those districts that are looking for other sources?
Sure, well, I'll I'll back up a little bit. So there's a there was a push here late last year for the local control and and there was um a couple of school boards started reaching out to other districts to try to get some volume to be heard, because one district doesn't really make any money, but when you have that many districts uniting uh to push for local control. Um, it's leading to more and more conversations of other stuff, so um, so that group, several of the districts have reached out to insurance companies, Heart Insurance was one of them. And multiple districts have gotten feedback from uh pri, I guess it'd be private insurance companies that would be willing to um take on that. You know, if there was a group of districts kind of like OSBA, I think originally OSBA was formed uh by this, by districts, so it would be kind of the same thing again, but starting over with with the interest of the districts in mind instead of OSBA's best interest. So I don't, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I I was just trying to get the direction of where that was going, because I know um when I've looked into self-insured before, um it was almost impossible for school districts to become self-insured with the exception of these extremely large districts. So I was just trying to wrap my head around how that information was or where that information was stemming from.
Well, and I don't think it's self-insured per se, it's actually a insurance company to insure a district. And they uh, one of the districts met with a PACE representative and they told them that it's there's PACE is listening because it's a high enough volume right now. And private insurance carriers are listening because it's a high enough volume, and so um, there's incentive out there with the insurance companies to, there's some, there is some volume.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like that something uh we could, we could have a a certainly a discussion topic of the business next agenda.
Perfect.
And I'll reach out to OSBA and see if there's something with us, okay?
Okay.
I I would actually I've only used OSBA for the um resources to board members, which I find extremely helpful. So I I'm not sure I guess for insurance, they have some sort of control over our district in a way. I guess I would need more information.
When it comes to the entrance, Katie, we're part of basically it's a consortium of a hun, well, there's a hundred ninety-seven school districts in the state of Oregon. And all but I believe three are part of that consortium, so we get um, as part of the consortium, PACE offers us um a package deal basically, and they offer, PACE also offers a multitude of things like um well, they have PACE Day, they do classes, they do the stuff when it comes to the drones, they do um they've got um classes on um sexual misconduct, they've got classes on um safety around the buildings. They just offer so much as a free service as being part of that. They have a legal service, they have what's called stop loss. Um so to find somebody that would offer all of that in one package like they do, um I I don't know that you would be able to find all of those components outside of PACE.
Well, I've I've used them the entire time. I've been on the board both times, so I guess I'm curious where Mark's thoughts are coming from, why would we pull away from that? So
Pace or OSBA?
Well, yeah, why would, why would school districts want to pull away from something that's benefiting them? I I guess I would need more information on that.
I I think a lot of districts feel that they are not being represented um by OSBA. And there's um and I think a lot of it comes down to politics and it becomes political. And they um if if your district needs legal representation, uh they provide attorneys. But the the attorneys are provided by OSBA. So it could be a conflict of interest. Um, also OSBA is the majority owner of the PACE insurance, so it's if you don't want to be a member of OSBA, then they they pull your insurance. So it's but they're the owner of the insurance company, so um, it's just some districts have, I guess, pushed the boundaries on through this COVID thing on what they can and can't do. Um, much like I was proposing for us to do, and um in OSBA is not there to support them, I guess, and um
Would that be with the attorneys? Because I I don't know anything about OSBA, OSBA having control over the schools necessarily. Am I wrong, Dr. Long?
I think the legal advice from OSBA has, we had a school district up north where the board and the superintendent basically did it with all masks. And the advice from OSBA would have been, don't do that because you'll have liabilities and you'll lose funding. And they did it, and the feds, the federal funding was pulled for, you know, so it's it's about, it's about risk management, and who do you look for for your legal advice? And and can you be confident that the legal advice you have will uh properly interpret what the actual state regulations and and laws are, statutes? And um I I I do sense part of this is the frustration around um directives from the governor's office to what goes on in school districts. I think that's the underlying tension there, and OSBA has not been recommending to school districts that you defy the executive mandates for legal reasons.
Because they're in charge of the insurance. I I think I understand the conversation now, and and I will, Mark, I'll read up on this before our next meeting.
Yeah, and I'll I'll try to bring a little more information than this, it's it's just yeah, I don't think I don't think there's the support. I I know I personally have asked in the years I've been here to change stuff, and the answer I got was well, OSBA doesn't allow that. So I'll try to think back through what some of those may have been, but it feel like it limits our flexibility. But all
Thinking O D E. Because they are putting out our guidelines, so I have to research the OSBA thing more.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark. Does anyone else have any questions or comments on that? Okay, any other board members have comments?
Yes, I do, Katie. I will not be at the meeting on the twenty-eighth in person due to my health problems.
Okay. I think that's that's totally fine. You can still hear the conversation just fine.
Katie?
Yes?
Um, going back to OSBA, they are representing a lot of school districts where some of the laws, some of the funding, some of the regulations that come out of the state. OSBA is there to review and analyze those. And all of these board policies that you guys are talking about are a product of OSBA, which those policies are reviewed by the attorneys. They look at what the state and legal system is, and so uh they're there for our protect- um, they're there for our protection. And they give us advice. They also survey a lot of the schools saying, here's what's coming from the legislature. And they lobby for more money or enhanced programs. So, you know, there, there's a lot to the services that they provide through either their uh, lobby business or a review of the policies, that sort of thing. So are they perfect? Maybe not. Uh, I would have to worry a little bit about switching from them over to a new unproven organization that says, yeah, we can get insurance. Insurance is not the only answer to the deal. This group is actually taking on a more political stand of state control. And I'm not on the board to get into politics. So, you know, um, the, the uh, the COVID thing is kind of going away. Now the group is talking about on to another portion or control from the state. And so I, I don't know that OSBA is involved in political pressure, but more in trying to find answers or advice to schools for issues that come up. Anyway, that's, that's uh, my two cents on the deal.
Thank you, Steve. That's, that's very informative. Um, Aaron, do you have anything to say?
No, other than I keep an open mind with all things. And if OSBA and the topic of changing things to get a better service to our district, I don't close the door at the beginning. I want to listen and learn. So. We're running into roadblocks and I'll have to disagree with Steve. Politics are here to stay, buddy. Everything we do is politics. Our whole lives are politics. And getting the answers and the resolve. And the best for a school district, politics every time five or six of us get together. So. It'd be nice if we could all come up with policy and enforce it. But as Dr. Long briefed us about thirty minutes ago, with the ever-changing mandates and the potential freedoms of our school as it relates to COVID coming up, it's still unclear. And it's politics. Politics are the ones that dictate all this stuff. So. I try to keep a open mind of all of it and listen to not one, but two, but three or four sides of things and find a path forward. That's what I have to say.
We do need more information.
I'm, I'm with Aaron on that too. It was, yeah, just uh, keeping an open mind. And I, I, I am curious about that, that conversation. I'll, I'll read about it. Were you done, Aaron?
I am done. Thank you. Um, and just, I actually, I guess the last thing I'll say is uh, maybe. I, I'm always unclear as to how we, the five of us can get together and talk before the meeting, whether that dictates a meeting or not, whatever. But um, Dr. Long said he will put together kind of a brief for us, uh, bullet statements, et cetera. After the uh, before the meeting and after the people, the public have their comments. If we have, you know, a day or two, let's be talking on email or on, on telephone, just to kind of a little bit of prep. I, I plan on sitting down and listening to folks and I'd like to be able to respond coherently. I'm glad to hear, Dr. Long, you'll be there and help us out. So, thanks.
When actually Aaron's comment is making me think, is, is it no longer um, February twenty-fourth, we're putting out our Continued Learning Plan? I heard, we changed the date.
That date has been changed to March thirty-first.
Yeah, okay. So we, we don't even know what ours is going to look like before this meeting.
That's right.
Okay, so one thing I would almost need to, on that is the input that we're receiving is, is going to be going into our plan? Does that sound about right, Dr. Long?
I, I, I think that's exactly it. This is an opportunity to interact with the community. And you'll get more, you'll probably get another wave of feed, of feedback after that meeting and your board meeting. But um, we, we do, it is helpful to have community input informed that plan. That's part of the process. So that's, that's, it's fortuitous that we would have a meeting that.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Um, so I guess my comment is, is thank you to our administration. You guys are doing a amazing job, Dr. Long. Uh, my, my middle schooler has enjoyed the time you've been spending with the middle school class. And I know all three of my kids just had a great day having downtime parties at the school. The middle school basketball and wrestling were a huge success. I know students in both. Uh, you guys are doing a great job.
Which reminds me, I just want to put one last comment in. We did have a middle school wrestler win the district in his weight class, uh, uh, Colton Culver, and he's now preparing for regionals. So. Yep. That's all I have.
I know kids on both teams and, and they just had a blast and learned a lot. Um, okay, so are we ready for eight point one adjournment?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
A second?
Hi, second.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.